Senator Arnold. And I'd like to say good evening to everybody this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, council members, city officials, and also our home audience. I'd like to welcome you to the September 12th City Council meeting. We have five items on our agenda this evening. We do have another piece of legislation to add in later as well. At this time, if you would, let's also begin to continue with roll call.
Patton.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Deel.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Floraema.
Here.
Corcoran.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
The next thing is our Pledge of Allegiance. Before we all stand for that, I'd like to make an announcement. I'm very happy and proud to have Truth 14, the Boy Scouts, here this evening that's going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. They are led by Todd Helman. We have Scotty Preston, William Snyder, Kenneth Hay, and Arison Helman that is in the group. If you would, all please come up and please be in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul, so thank you very much for coming. And I wish you good luck with your scout with Patrick. I hope you have as much fun as scouts since I did back then. A few years ago. Thanks for coming. Moving on, we have the approval of the journal. The amendments in the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Do we have a motion to take second minutes? I have a motion by Mr. Corcoran, seconded by Mr. Floraema. Roll call on the motion to take second minutes.
Patton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Deel.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
The amendments have been accepted. At this time, we have reports from our committees. Does anybody have a report? Mrs. Gray.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Human Resources Committee had a meeting this evening and would like to report out on two specific items, one being, how about it? Assignment number 16-095, which is a request for legislation to appropriate 17,500 funding general fund to pay for insurance deductibles for two claims, and that is being recommended to the Law Director's Office for review and post creation of legislation. And for tonight's agenda, I would like to request to waive the three-day, three-day receipt rule for what could be, would be item number six, a first reading of a resolution for claiming the support of the City of Chillicothe and recognizing the month of September as prostate cancer awareness month. All of you should have a copy of that resolution in front of you. And at this time, I would like to request a motion.
I have the motion to move forward with that. Seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Deel.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And we have waived the three-day receipt rule on that, and it will become number, item number six on our agenda this evening.
Thank you. And at the appropriate time, I will request to waive the three-day rule and would ask for your favorable response in voting this through and approve you tonight. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Very much, Mrs. Gray. Any other reports? Mrs. Patton.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Utilities/Transit Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Items number four and five are both resolutions authorizing the mayor to submit with ODOT an application for grants to the Ohio Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration. Normally, we would just do a can't choose that one resolution. The entire grant this year has been broken out. One is for a Section 5311 grant in amount of $1,520,000, and requests for operating expenses in the amount of $1,250,000, capital maintenance of $220,000, and $50,000 for the state of Ohio. This grant deadline has been moved up by a month. It was normally due in October. It is now deadline of September 16th. So at the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three-day rule on this asset. Also, item number five is a Section 5339 grant in amount of $72,900. It is for one vehicle, one bus, that will cost $67,500, and a vehicle surveillance system for transit in the amount of $5,400. And again, this grant is due on the 16th, and we'll ask that we waive the three-day rule.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Any other reports? Mr. Cole.
The Finance Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item number one is ordinance to accept and appropriate insurance funds for repairs related to the water leak at the former municipal port building at 26 South Paint, this location. So that we can reduce that, I would ask at the appropriate time that we waive the three-day rule. Item number three is a ordinance at first reading to amend Chapter 163 of the City of Chillicothe's income tax of the codified ordinance of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio. And this is some language change, and I will defer to the auditor to explain the necessity of this, and at the appropriate time, waive the three-day rule. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Any other committee reports to say? Seeing none, we'll move on to our reports from our officials. Mayor, move forward.
Thank you, President Arnold. First, I'd like to give an update on the service garage, and I love it. I like to talk about bats. I've seen several emails come through, and I want to reassure the concerned public and bat-friendly persons that we are not planning on exterminating any bats. I don't know how the misinformation began. I think it might be because the first company we called is called Terminex, who's not planning on killing any bats. We have received a variety of quotes, and before we take any action, we're going to verify, no DNR and all the appropriate folks, that our methods are humane and appropriate for their environment as well being. That being said, the, I don't know if infestation is the inappropriate word, but there are a lot of bats living in that building, and the cleanup and removal of those bats in a humane manner is not going to achieve. We've got votes from a couple different folks already, and we're looking at between $40,000 and $50,000 simply to remove the bats and clean up the mess. In the process, of course, we also found where the bats are coming in. Long story short, is that the building also needs a new roof. So, as many of you know, we took pretty swift action to move personnel and most of the equipment to the armory and the surrounding area around the armory. There was some immediate work needed to get the armory up to sort of daily living conditions, putting in a new toilet, that kind of thing, getting water flowing again. In the beginning, we had all of the equipment down there. A lot of that equipment was moved back to the service garage, so you shouldn't see garbage trucks and some of that more unsightly stuff in the park anymore. I apologize for that short period of time, but we did have some of that unsightly stuff in the park. We've also looked at screening for the fence around the armory. I think screening around the fence around the armory would be nice anyway, but just the potential that if we're going to have to store equipment very long, it might be nice to block that view. So as of right now, garbage trucks and some of the other equipment is up at the service garage. We've basically been told by the Health Department that going in and out of that building is probably okay. You should not be spending much time in there or burying food in there, that kind of thing. But, so, the short-term solution is that we're housed in the armory, and we're doing sort of several things at once to try and figure out what we're doing next. In the armory, we're trying to figure out, if it becomes necessary, what it would take for us to get to the winter in the armory. The main work right now is figuring out the boiler, furnace, what might clean happen there. That takes some estimates. We know that we have a leaky roof. Otherwise, they've done a nice job getting it cleaned up. Some other alternatives that we're looking into is the, maybe the short-term rental of another facility, and then we're also looking into, because of the expense to clean up the service garage, what it would take to actually build another building as an alternative. That's not a short-term solution in my mind, but I think it's something we have to consider because between $40,000 to $50,000 for cleanup and then the cost of a new roof, that's a lot of money to put into rebuilding a building. So, that's what's happening at the service garage. Bats are going to be okay. They're going to have to find a new home eventually, but we're going to be nice to them. So spread that word, please, and the garbage structure out of the park. Item number two I've got is that the, we've started our budget process internally. I'm working it a little bit differently than we've done the past few years. What I've asked my department heads to do is to start with their capital request, and we've delivered a new form to them to basically establish the need for the item, the longevity of the item, the item is being replaced, whether or not it saves money, that kind of thing. It should be submitted for every purchase, every capital item that's over about $5,000. And since we're doing it a little bit differently, I'm starting with the department heads before I meet with the law director, auditor, courts, to start on their budgets. Crystal and I have also, the auditor and I have also been working together to work on expense and revenue projections. The way I look at it is that by the time we get to some of the actual operating expenses, what I'd like to see is the department heads be able to maneuver their budgets as they see fit a little bit more. What I mean by that is right now, a budget adjustment, to simplify it, if you run out of staples, the line that you can buy staples out of, you have to send something to the auditor's office to get approval for paper, the cost of paper can be moved to the cost of staples. I think if we give some flexibility to our department heads, and really, the new software is going to allow that, they'll be able to manage their budget, their operating budget more full as opposed to this cumbersome process, you can pay bills faster. And so, I anticipate a smooth budget process, but I just want to let everybody here know that we have started, and that I think we might be doing it just a little bit differently this year. Finally, two Fridays ago, hey, last Friday or the Friday before, I submitted our land bank grant application. It ended up being submitted with a total request of $725,000. $500 is the minimum that we'll get, and then we identified several other homes in a pipeline. For every one of those homes that they deem credible in the pipeline, we get an additional We will know the results of that application sometime in October. The way we have it set up now is, at least in the first, the final months of this year, the administration of that grant will just be handled by the administration. We also made clear that our first request was going to be the loan money that OPA has established would be available. If for some reason we didn't get that, which is free loan made available to us, our backup funding stream would be the appropriation we talked about and canceled, will eventually be reimbursed to us eventually. So, I was pretty happy with it when I was submitted. I think, I think it's a strong application. And we can find out in October what comes of it. Finally, on items four and five, the two grant applications referenced by Councilwoman Patrick, I would support her request to waive the three-day rule and approve those two applications, submission of the applications. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mayor Green. Now, we'll hear from our auditor, Ms. Spatina.
I'm going to touch base with number three, the man, Chapter 163 of the City Income Tax Codified Ordinance of the City of Chillicothe. This ordinance is to make changes to the due date of the city's capacity due to the Senate Bill 172. The first change, monthly recording payments are now considered timely and postponed by the due date rather than by the date that it's actually received. And then the second change is, quarterly recording payments are now due by the last day of the month, following the last day of the calendar quarter. This will be effective the third quarter payments in 2016, and the second quarter recordings will still fall the same, the date of the month following the calendar year. So those are the two main changes. There's another small terminology change, but those are made to be discussed in the future.
Thank you very much. And our law director, Ms. Ruff.
Thank you, President Arnold. Yesterday, there was an honoring heroes parade. Part of the parade route, we just want to make sure that we again thank all the first responders, the State Highway Patrol, the Chillicothe Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Sheriff's Office. I guess they just never know what they're going to get into when they go to work, on any given day, and we're going to try to honor them again. That's really all I have to report on today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mrs. Patton.
I do have one other item I want to report on. Item number two, accept and appropriate $1,731.40 received by the Chillicothe City Court participating in the AEP Electrification Program. So at the appropriate time, too, we can accept and appropriate that asset and waive the three-day rule.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. I don't have anything major, a few minor things. Prior to the meeting, I passed out what are called cleanup sheet, which just deals with legislation that we started out with earlier in the year that is still dangling. What I've given you, I may have missed something, so what I want you to do is either tell me what's going on and/or correct me. Okay? So either way, just look over the items that you've got, let me know where we're moving to, so I can put it in my master sheet and get an idea of what's going on. Josh, I want to address Josh's replacement here for a second, because I know we have a committee that's open right now as far as chairman. The protocol, just so people know, is that the Los County Democratic Party, which Josh has a party affiliation with, is going to go through a selection process and pick out a replacement. And as far as anything, he's got several committee items as well, kind of window right now. Until that point in time, we find out whose replacement is, there are some rules as to deal with, there's many assignments that are currently, which will be a by-do-by, but I am not going to make any formal announcement as to how we carry forward with everything until after we do find out who Josh's replacement is. As a final note, I'd like to say that the PO has been written, and it's been sent to people with the air conditioning system. I have got word back one day last week that they have ordered, so I don't have a timeline. So, that's all I've got to report on that. We should have air conditioning, but I just don't have time. We'll see how that goes. At this point, I don't have anything else. Mr. Fosse, do you have anything to report? Yeah, before we bow, sorry. At this point, we have audience participation. We have implemented a sign-in sheet, which is across the room, I don't have it in my hand, but we'll just have, there's not that many people here that sit here, just have to come up to the microphone. Please step forward with your name and your address. Council Rule 21, ladies and gentlemen, need speaker to a five-minute presentation and a total limitation of 15 minutes per subject. Sidely indicate by giving you some sort of assignment, you have one minute remaining. This should give you ample time to summarize your presentation. Anybody who wishes to speak or add anything at any given time, by all means, it's welcome to. We just need your name and address, three letters. So at this time, do you have anyone that you want to ask?
My name is Terry Williams. I reside at 371 Flyley's Lane. I'm a proud worker and resident here in the City of Chillicothe. My comments today are going to be a little longer, I think, in writing than they are allowed in a five-minute time period, so Mr. Fosse and I have prepared a paper today that will provide here, and I'll provide you an electronic copy as well. On July 19th, 2016, in an email communication to members of your organization, Ms. Tammy Eleanardo, as chairperson of the Economic Development Alliance of Southern Ohio, sent an email to ADASO members soliciting support for a petition opposing a nondiscrimination ordinance which was to be considered by the City of Chillicothe City Council within a few weeks' time. The petition distributed by Ms. Eleanardo was sent as follow-up to conversation that had occurred earlier in the day during ADASO's regular meeting. This petition includes objectionable material promoting discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. In her petition, Ms. Eleanardo claims that certain applications should be considered inappropriate for homosexual persons, that transgender persons should not have free access to public restroom facilities in the Chillicothe community, and that the government should not regard homosexual persons as equal with heterosexual persons. Even more disturbing, and perhaps the most important part of this story, is the fact that Ms. Eleanardo, in an apparent effort to close her petition with an aura of legitimacy, claims in writing that the petition was authored by a local judge. Apart from the obvious political and moral issues presented by Ms. Eleanardo's actions, her implication of a local judge in offering a statement that is clearly biased and prejudicial against several classes of persons in our community is unavoidably unjust. The idea that a local jurist would promote legal opinions that denigrate the personhood of transgender persons and assail the equality of homosexual persons with their heterosexual neighbors is appalling. Such conduct on the part of any jurist calls into question her or his ability to serve as a judge in our community, and while unresolved, casts a dark pall on her or his court, calling into question a great number of cases that might come before that particular judge. In an effort to resolve this situation, this serious issue of judicial malfeasance, I appealed to Ms. Eleanardo to name the judge. Those appeals have gone unregarded. Escalating that effort, I continued my quest, inquiring of other individuals. I inquired of the judges of the Municipal and the Common Police Court. We received a response from the Common Police judges denying that they had issued such an opinion, no such communication from the Chillicothe Municipal Judges. I have appealed to the executive leadership, both of the county and of the city, and have heard no response either from the county commissioners or from the executives, except for one member of the executive branch of our city, Ms. Rufford, who chose to spoke out, speak out, rather, at a public meeting, making the statement that she had not observed any discrimination complaints coming before the Equal Employment Opportunity Office of the city about LGBT issues in the last five years, implying, of course, there's no discrimination. What Ms. Rufford did not happen to state in her comments was that EEO has nothing to do with LGBTQ persons who visit our state. Equal Employment Opportunity Law does not protect those people. I'm at a loss at this point in terms of what we can do. We have appealed to as many different organizations as we can. We are sitting in a situation where the local judiciary has been puked, malfeasance in the local judiciary, misfeasance by a member of our local executive branch, and for the most part, aside from Ms. Gray, we've heard nothing from the local legislative branch. You've had plenty of opportunities to discuss this in both of the community fair speeches, and yet, time after time, when LGBTQ members who are assumed as abominations, hurtful, horrible things said about individuals in this community, we've heard nothing. And I wonder this day what our options are. I take as a suggestion, suggestions made by individuals who spoke in opposition of the nondiscrimination ordinance, particularly Ms. Diana Carnes and Mr. Michael Lockwood, they have suggested free market solutions to this problem, primarily boycotts. Perhaps it is time for us to ask our neighbors and our friends not to spend money at certain businesses. Of course, that would include the entire City of Chillicothe and Los County at this point, which would be untenable for many of us. But perhaps the time has come to begin preparing for a different kind of response, a free market solution. Perhaps the time has come to ask our friends and relatives who live abroad not to visit, stop, or shop in Chillicothe until this issue with the judiciary and the issue of nondiscrimination is solved. I sincerely hope you will do something before all of this comes to such a head. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Floraema. Does anybody else have anything to say? Present the council's. Not seeing such, move on. At this time, old business. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up? Old business, petitions and correspondence received by the court. Now it's your turn. Thank you, President Arnold. You're welcome. The only thing I have is the receipt, a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of the transfer permit, or the issuance of a permit to Plaza Hospitality LLC, doing business at Sperfield Inn and Suites Hotel, 30 North Plaza, Old Hall. The date for response on this is actually past due, but I apologize, this wasn't delivered sooner, but it was misplaced in the wrong mail. And in any event, this would traditionally, not to be presumptuous, this would traditionally be non-controversial, but you have this for your information anywhere. If somebody did wish to object, I'm sure that the Ohio Division of Liquor Control would still entertain any comment. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fosse. New business? Does anybody have any new business they'd like to bring up? Yes, Mrs.?
Thank you, President Arnold. I would just like to ask, very close at this time, a moment of silence in remembrance of what took place 15 years ago on 9/11. And I think that even though yesterday primarily marked the usual observance of that, as Law Director Rufford had mentioned, I think that it's only appropriate that we would also take a moment to recognize those who lost their lives as well as those who were affected by what took place on 9/11.
Any other new business matters? Not seeing none. Committee assignments. Mr. Clay brought to my attention earlier that he is going to have a City Services meeting through today, Monday, here in Council Chambers at 7:00. The City Service is in the current, unless he ends up with more assignments, deals with preparation for leaf pickup this fall, so head of the game and get that together before school leaves. Actually, I've got some that's already falling down, so the time needs to get rolling. Any other meeting dates that anybody would like to bring forward and make an announcement this evening? Not seeing none. We move on to our legislation. Mr. Fosse, want to ever- Mr. Fosse, whenever you're ready. Item number one, please.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating insurance funds for repairs related to a water leak at the former Municipal Court Building at 26 South Hank Street and declaring emergency. First reading.
At this time, I'd ask that we please waive the three-way rule.
A motion to waive the three-way rule, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. All follow that motion, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
We waive the three-way rule. Now, all follow the ordinance, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number two, please.
First reading of an ordinance, accepting and appropriating seventeen hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents received by the city for participating in the AEP Energy Efficiency Program and declaring emergency. First reading.
At this time, I'd ask that we please waive the three-way rule.
Mr. Paul's asked for the three-way rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. You'll all follow the waived rule, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
We waive the three-way rule. All follow the ordinance, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number three, please.
First reading of an ordinance amending chapter 163, City of Chillicothe Income Tax of Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring emergency. First reading.
At this time, I'd ask that we please waive the three-way rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-way rule, seconded by Mrs. Gray. You'll all follow that motion, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
We waive the rule. All follow the ordinance, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Chillicothe to submit an application proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration as authorized under federal transit laws for funds from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, accepting such grant and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal acceptance and declaring emergency. And this is the one under 49 U.S.C. 53.11. First reading.
Mrs. Patrick?
To allow administration to meet the deadline, they have accepted the request.
I have a motion to waive the three-way rule, seconded by Mr. Florina. You'll all follow the motion to waive the rule, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
We've waived the rule. All follow the resolution, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Item number five.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Chillicothe to submit an application proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration as authorized under federal transit laws for funds from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, accepting such grant and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal acceptance and declaring an emergency. And this is in reference to 49 U.S.C. Section 5339. First reading.
Mrs. Patrick?
In order to meet the deadline, we have to issue a request.
I have a motion to waive the rules, seconded by Mrs. Gray. You'll all follow that motion.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
And that motion has passed. All follow the resolution, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. And our additional item number six, let's see.
First reading of a resolution proclaiming the support of the City of Chillicothe in recognizing the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. First reading.
Mrs. Gray?
Thank you, President Arnold. I would like to request to waive the three-way rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-way rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. You'll all follow that motion, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
And that motion has passed. You'll all follow the resolution, please.
Tattman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Does anybody else have anything to add? If not, that concludes our business. Our motion adjourned.